Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Brandywine School District's Board of Education Regular Meeting. Tonight is Monday, May eighth, two thousand twenty-three. We are live in Brandywine High School auditorium, so live via Zoom broadcast. Ms. Harris, may I please have a roll call? Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
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 Thank you, Ms. Harris. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend Perry to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the season's agenda.
Sum to second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Start off with our high school reports, beginning with Concord High School. Mohammed Uden and Mira Ratnagiri.
Good evening, board members and Brandywine School District community members. My name is Mira Ratnagiri, the Treasurer of Concord High School's Student Council, and I'm accompanied by our Secretary, Rashil Patel. Since the last board meeting, Concord has been very involved in raising funds and building communities so that we can finish this year strong. Last meeting, our President Mohammed and Vice President Tassin gave a presentation on our achievements throughout the year. Today, we will be pleased to inform you of our continuing efforts of our students, staff, and community. So, our Interact Club held another successful blood drive last week in partnership with the Blood Bank of Delaware, and we had over forty staff members and student volunteers donating blood. Our Interact Club also sold Be Positive shirts to support our community fundraiser towards the organization and spread awareness for this cause. They donated a profit of two hundred five dollars to the Be Positive organization. In addition to the Interact Club, our Boys and Girls Lacrosse Team chose to donate their ticket sales from the game against Brandywine to the Be Positive organization. Combining the profits from ticket sales and the eighty-plus t-shirt sales, our lacrosse teams have raised one thousand three hundred thirteen dollars towards fighting childhood cancer. Speaking of fundraising, our fundraising efforts have truly been a community endeavor, having our students and staff reach out to their families and friends to help us reach our goal and bring as much awareness as we can towards this organization. We give our special thanks to Charcoal Pit for donating ten percent of their revenue from our event on April thirteenth to Concord High School's team, and a fundraiser organized by our President Mohammed. We are also pleased to announce that Charcoal Pit's owner, Louis Capano, was so moved by our school's effort that he offered to personally donate two thousand five hundred dollars to our team as well. The donation from Charcoal Pit fundraiser and Mr. Capano's donation are both currently being processed and will be shown on our BSD Fest website soon. Including those donations, Concord has raised almost seven thousand dollars for the Be Positive organization. On behalf of our joint student council, consisting of all three high schools, our district goal of bringing community together has culminated in an event called BSD Fest, held on Saturday, May thirteenth, from ten to two at Brandywine High School. This event will be free of cost to attend. There will be food trucks, field, and carnival games ranging from cornhole to bounce houses. There will be a QR code and a link to sign up on the last slide. We invite you all and your families to come out and enjoy a day full of games, food, and activities. In addition to the fun, we will be having a speaker from the Be Positive organization join us on that day, as well as Be Positive heroes who are able to beat cancer through the help of this organization. Before Rashil continues our updates within Concord and plans for next year, since this will be my last time speaking, I would like to take a moment to thank the district board and community for giving me this opportunity and experience with public speaking. As for my plans for next year, I'm happy to announce I'll be attending the University of Pennsylvania to attend, to study mechanical or bioengineering.
Congratulations to Mira on that amazing achievement. I know you will do great things in life. Before I get too emotional about these guys graduating, let's get back to school updates. For Teacher Appreciation Week this week, our students have come together to write kind messages for each of their teachers, which are displayed for them to see. Each day, the teachers will be receiving a treat. Today was pretzels provided by the administration team. Tomorrow will be pastries and donuts provided by our Interact Club, and food trucks for teachers later in the week. May first was, uh, could we move to the next slide? May first was the last day for National Honor Society members to turn in their hours, and we can proudly say that NHS alone has summed up a total of three thousand five hundred and three hours for this academic year. I want to thank our NHS officers for this year, who made it all possible. In the slide, from left to right, there are Tassin Akon, Mira Ratnagiri here, Jack Hanlon, Ashiana Patel, Mary O'Toole, and Nicholas Henry. The NHS also had a busy week last week as they held elections for next year's officers and held their induction ceremony, in which sixty-nine new members joined the organization. I am also proud to announce that this year, our students have expressed their school spirit at the Student Run School Store. Our store sold a total of sixteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars of Concord gear this year, which goes to show how effective Concord has been at building a sense of community and belonging. Many more seniors have committed to their colleges, which include prestigious schools such as the University of Virginia, Stanford University, and the University of Michigan. Our seniors are going into a wide variety of majors, ranging from fashion merchandise to intelligence analysis to elementary teacher education. As this is the last board meeting of the year, at least for us, we want to thank the people whose support and guidance were essential to our successes this year. We thank our student council advisors, Ms. Brody and Dr. Royster. Ms. Brody stayed up many nights editing documents at two AM and juggling so many different roles as a staff member that we've lost count. Dr. Royster, with his uras and incentive field trips, never let our energy dampen. We also thank our principal, Mr. Mayer, who helps support us with school resources whenever we needed them, and inspired us to handle our business, as he says. We could not have done any of this without Ms. Davis, our Joint Student Council Coordinator, who kept us on track and handled the district side of the business for our three school student councils. Last but not the least, we thank our district board members for giving us the opportunity to respect, represent our school's student body, and gain valuable leadership experience. Moving forward into next school year, Concord hopes to not only live up to the legacy of this year's student council, but also do even better. While Mira, Tassin, and Mohammed are all graduating this year, I'm running for the president of student council, and if I do get elected and if I stand at this podium again, I want to talk about even more club involvement, even more community building and community service, about many more academic and athletic achievements, and even district-wide projects like BSD Fest. As we close our last speech of the year, Concord Student Council hopes to amaze you again next year with even more news to update all of you on. Thank you. Also, you can scan that QR code if you want to sign up to go to BSD Fest. It's Brandywine High School, ten AM to two PM, May thirteenth, the Saturday. Any questions?
I would just like to say to the three representatives from Concord this year, thank you so much for the work that you have put in. I do feel like you were somewhat running your election speech campaigning while you're up there, which is phenomenal use of your time. But I also want you guys to know that you really have elevated the board meeting and the professionalism of our students coming to our board meetings, and thank you for taking it seriously and for all that you've done. And it sounds like you guys are doing great things at Concord, and I really like the depth and detail of your presentations, so thank you for doing that, and I hope you get to continue doing what you do.
Thank you for the opportunity to do that.
And I think the numbers that you shared were way impressive in any economic environment, but certainly the one that we're in now. The fundraising dollars that you as a group have pulled together is, should be commended. I appreciate that you gave a list of people that you were thanking. I want to add to that list. Thank you, the students and student leadership, for pushing your peers to be so engaged in the community and to do good things and partner with great organizations like Be Positive and everything else that you all have done throughout the year. So, hats off to you, great job.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Next up, we have Mount Pleasant High School, Dylan Kim and Mei Wang.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, Mr. Superintendent, Brandywine School District Board members, and members of the Brandywine School District community. My name is Dylan Kim, and I'm the Student Council President of Mount Pleasant High School. The JRC VEX Robotics Team recently returned from their trip to Dallas, Texas, having competed in the VEX World Championship and the JRC National Championship. Both K and G teams did an amazing job, with the K Team winning the sportsmanship award at the JRC Competition. Their sense of professionalism and sportsmanship in competition represents Mount Pleasant High School as competitors of character, and we are very proud to have them bear the title of Green Knight. The Black Student Union and Girls Empower Clubs hosted their Greek Step Showcase a couple of weeks ago. It's a cultural event meant to be both educational and engaging. There were various black sororities and food trucks represented at the event. Along with them included Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Delta Sigma Theta Sigma Gamma Row, and Omega Sci-Fi. Students and staff performed as well, along with a DJ and fifty-person drum line as the grand finale. There was a photo booth as well, which looked stunning. There were alumni that attended, connecting the tradition throughout the years, and the event had an amazing turnout. We'd like to thank the BSU and Girls Empower for their continued dedication to bringing awareness to the wonders of African-American culture to our community. As we wrap up our year, AP and IB tests have been hard on our students. I had mine today. Among these tests during the month of May, there are a lot of end-of-year celebrations. Avid had a senior celebration last Wednesday. The JRC program will have its award banquet and senior recognition event tomorrow night, and the music program will have its awards dessert this Wednesday. I wish the best, we wish the best of luck to our AP and IB students on the exams. As always, for the last time this year, the Mount Pleasant High School community would like to thank our Principal, Ms. Lacy, our Student Council Advisor, Ms. Herskowitz, Ms. Davis, our Joint Student Council Advisor, and the entire community for giving me, myself and my team to lead these wonderful bright men and women. It's truly been a pleasure to work with the community this year, and I'm proud of the progress we've all made. Thank you, and we're open to questions at this time.
Fantastic report, Dylan, thank you. I know this will be the same for Brandywine as it was for Concord U. I appreciate the thanks that you give to your student advisors and building leadership. I know that, you know, there are great hands and minds that are guiding you along, but I also want to thank you all as the students for pushing those administrators and teachers with the ideas and work that you're doing and things that you're bringing forward is really pushing them as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan.
Thank you.
And last but certainly not least, Brandywine High School, Evan Gant.
Hello. Good evening, board members and BSD community. My name is Evan Gant, and I am Brandywine High School's Student Council President, and I am here to provide Brandywine High School's student report for May. With spring sports season ending soon, I felt that it'd be appropriate to start off with a summary of how our spring sports are doing. So, with baseball is ending on the twentieth, with their next game on the eleventh against Newark High School, and a current record of five and eight. Golf is ending on the sixteenth, but they're gonna be making it to championships that extend onto the twenty-third. Their next game is on the ninth against William Penn, with a current record of six and seven. Boys Lacrosse is ending on the nineteenth, with their next game on the ninth, which is their senior night, against AI DuPont, with a current record of two and seven. Girls Lacrosse is ending on the tenth, with a final game against Christiana, a current record of six and seven. Girls Lacrosse is ending on the fifteenth, their next game on the tenth against Tatinol, and a current record of ten and two, which is very impressive. Softball is ending on the seventeenth, with their next game on the tenth against Dell Castle, with a current record of six and seven. Boys Tennis is ending on the sixteenth, with their next game on the tenth against Archmere, and their current record being six and three. Girls Tennis is ending on the sixteenth, with their next game on the eleventh against Saint Marks, with a current record of six and four. Track and Field ended on April twenty-fifth, with a record of six and two, and they're gonna be continuing through the championships until May twentieth. And then lastly, Boys Volleyball ended on the fifth, with a record of five and ten, and we want to thank and show appreciation for all the students participating in the sports at Brandywine. Next, we have, which will be acknowledged later on, Brandywine's engineering teams were recognized as a national finalist by Samsung's Solve for Tomorrow competition, which is a very big thing. I think, I just wanted to acknowledge the kind of thing that they did, it's really impressive. Brandywine's prom is coming up. Brandywine is receiving donations and asking for volunteers for the production of twenty-twenty-three's after-prom, which is occurring, that and the prom on May twenty-seventh. Brandywine just finished up their most recent targeted freshman honorary ceremony, which is meant to reward freshmen for good grades, good athletics, good behavior, and it allowed for over a hundred freshmen to be acknowledged with rewards and certificates at these events. Brandywine's Spring Fling and Spirit Week has recently concluded with another successful pep rally, which is the third for the year, and a successful dance on Saturday night. And we want to give props to Brandywine's Class of Twenty-Twenty-Five for bringing it all together and organizing the turnout. The leaders of the pack at Brandywine is wrapping up their year's work with concluding the final touches for the committees of school spirit, school slogan, and community service, and they're retying up recommendations going into the next year to allow it to be a smooth transition. And then, final promotion, since the district work, the BSD Fest is occurring on May thirteenth, ten to two, fundraiser for Be Positive Organization, and we hope all of you can attend and come. And then, lastly, since it's fitting, we wanted to thank Ms. Reggio, as well as everyone involved in student council, the class offices and the committees, that allow for all the individuals who desire to make Brandywine a better place become a thing, and we found it fitting at the last board meeting to be the time to show recognition. That's all, so I'm open for questions.
Evan, two questions. My first is, what are Brandywine's plans to increase that donation to compete with Concord? Like, do you know any plans in the works to get that note out?
With the timeframe, unfortunately, there isn't much that we can do in terms of making a massive jump, but we hope to increase the amount of promotion that we have for the event to allow more people to still be involved to some extent with the BSD Fest, and to be just spraying awareness for the organization as well. So, even if our donation amount isn't as much as Concord's extremely impressive height, we still want to be able to allow for some kind of impact being made by Brandywine.
So, will there be any money raised the day of the event?
That's undecided, from my understanding. There is? Oh, okay, there is.
Thank you. And then, I'm sorry if you mentioned this, but did you tell us that if you have plans after high school?
Oh, yeah, I will be attending University of Delaware to study exercise science.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
One last comment, one last comment. I'm looking forward to Brandywine Fest as well, and not to show any bias, because it's all going to the same cause, but I think the Brandywine High School Class of Ninety-two has a couple dollars left in their account that they'll be looking to donate to the cause. I'll catch up with you sometime this week, if not at the fest.
We love to take what you have, yeah.
You have, you have two members of the Class of Ninety-two on the board, so...
And I'm not sure anyone's noticed throughout, you know, this is a really special group of student leaders, and watching the exchanges between the schools of handshakes and pats on the back, and just the level of collaboration and cooperation and support they've given each other, it's pretty impressive, so congratulations.
Thank you.
And that will lead us to High School Reporters Special Recognition, presented by Dr. Kutch and Mr. Rivera.
Members of the board, Superintendent Holler, how impressive were our high school reporters this year? Our board reporters took the time each month to solicit student voice and share the students' impact on our community. They organized information from clubs, organizations, athletics, and then presented it publicly in a very professional manner, and with personality sometimes. It was evident that they took their responsibility very seriously. To our student reporters, I know this for sure. Each of you strengthened our community by presenting the impact of student voice and the power of student leadership. You also assisted our district leadership team in making more informed decisions to improve the education and the experience of all students in BSD. And finally, you represent, you represent the best of what it means to be a Brandywine Bulldog, conquer radar, freighter, and a Mount Pleasant Knight. Since this is the last board meeting of the school year for student presentations, I ask for all the student reporters to come back onto stage at this time. I'm gonna read the names of any of the reporters who had presented throughout the year. They may or may not be here tonight. From Brandywine High School, we want to recognize Evan Gant, Bobby Bear, and Grace Tyler. From Concord High School, we have Mira Ratnagiri, Rashil Patel, Mohammed Uden, and Tassin Akon. And from Mount Pleasant High School, Dylan Kim and Mei Wang. Collectively, you have set the bar high for next year's reporters. We hope that this experience helped build your own confidence and leadership skills. We wish the seniors continued success in college next year. Job very well done. It says Certificate of Special Recognition, and that has a student's name, is awarded for this certificate of special recognition for being, in this case, Brandywine High School's School Board Reporter for the twenty-twenty-three school year. Then it's signed by our superintendent and board president. Congratulations.
Wow. Business Professionals of America, known as BPA, is a career and technical student organization that develops and empowers student leaders to discover their passion and change the world by creating unmatched opportunities in learning, professional growth, and service. We would like to congratulate tonight's DuPont Middle School's Business Professionals of America chapter on their winning achievements at the twenty-twenty-three BPA National Leadership Conference in Anaheim, California. This occurred from April twenty-sixth to April thirtieth, and historic, sixty-five-hundred students competed at this event, which consisted of twenty-five states and Puerto Rico, as well as an international presence from China, Haiti, and Peru. All seven members of the PS DuPont chapter ranked in the top ten of one or more of the competitive events nationally. Yeah, how about that? As a result, they walked across the national stage in front of a live audience while being livestreamed nationally and internationally to proudly receive their medals. And I know I saw a bunch tonight, and they brought them with them, so I love all that bling. Could Heidi Corbin and Megan Davis please come to the stage and help us present some certificates? These two fine ladies traveled across the country with their team. Thank you so much for doing that. Oh, and I saw Dr. Tartaglioni in the audience tonight. Why don't you come up too? That would be fantastic. Okay, now, I'll be announcing the students one by one. What we would like for you to do is just come across the stage. We'll hand you a certificate, and we'll be able to get a nice picture. Our eighth-grade students. Rajah Bascharan, who was president this year. Come on up. I know, be careful, don't hit anybody in the head with those medals, my goodness. Minaj Suresh, who was vice president this year. I love that plain clang. Megan Lee, secretary. Nikita Ayer, treasurer. Ayesha Adelaide, parliamentarian. Abigail Wang. And our seventh grader, Sai Durasala. Let's give these students a nice round of applause for representing us on the national stage.
Thank you, Dr. Kutch. Thank you, Dr. Tartaglioni. Thank you, parents. Thank you, any staff members that are watching this, because we couldn't have done it without all of you. We really thank you.
Thank you. No, thank you. Hey, at this time, could Dr. Wagner please come to the stage? Each year, the Delaware Advisory Council on Career and Technical Education recognizes individuals who have made outstanding contributions to career and technical education, otherwise known as CTE. Last week, Dr. Judd Wagner was recognized as one of those individuals. Last week, Dr. Judd Wagner was recognized as one of those individuals for the entire state of Delaware. Here are some of the words they used to describe Dr. Wagner. Dr. Judd Wagner is an exceptional educator who has dedicated himself to empowering his students and fellow teachers in the fields of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. As a career and technical education and science C T E Presidential Award-winning teacher, he has worked tirelessly to inspire his students to pursue, to pursue careers in STEM and equip them with the knowledge and skills needed to succeed in the workforce. His passion for teaching and his subject matter is evident in the outstanding results achieved by his students. We'll hear a little bit more later tonight. Many of whom have gone on to pursue successful careers in STEM-related fields. He actively contributes not only to his building but throughout his district and the state, leading initiatives such as K-12 STEM programming, physics curriculum writing, and C T E planning, making him a beloved and respected member of the education community. On behalf of the board, Judd, congratulations. Well done. Don't go anywhere. Wow, this is a big deal. Brandywine High School named national finalists in the Samsung Solve for Tomorrow STEM Competition. So you've heard the word. We've shared and spread this word. Many of you have been voting online. Thank you so much. As you most know, that they, the Brandywine High School Engineering Team has been named as one of ten national finalists in the Samsung Solve for Tomorrow STEM Competition. As part of their application process, they had to submit a video. They designed it. They wrote it. All their ideas. We would like to share with you their video they created that captures all that they were able to do. So at this time, we'd like to play the video. This is an incredible honor and accomplishment, and no matter which team is chosen as number one, this team will always be number one to us. Please join us on the stage. Thomas Bear, Noah Fake, Anand John, Arun Krishnamurti, and Gabriel Post. Now, next week, these gentlemen will be traveling to Washington, D.C. for the last part of the competition, in which they will find themselves onstage making a pitch around their products. We thought it would be a great idea to provide them an opportunity to make a pitch now to you all, to the board, for your feedback before they're off and running in Washington. So at this time, I give it over to our Brandywine team.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Noah Fake.
My name's Anand John.
My name's Thomas Bear.
I'm Arun Krishnamurti.
And I'm Gabriel Post, and we are the Brandywine High School Samsung Solve for Tomorrow team. Firstly, we'd like to give a big thanks to Dr. Michelle Kutch for arranging for the opportunity for us to present tonight. And we'd also like to give a big shout out to the talented Mick Austin for all of her wonderful work behind the scenes. So we've all been in school together for twelve years, and we came up throughout the same Brandywine School District programs. We all started together in kindergarten at Mount Pleasant Elementary School in the gifted program. And we continued with that program at Claymont Elementary School and P S Dupont Middle School. And finally, this culminated in us completing our four years here at Brandywine High School, three of which included the design and engineering pathway. So we've all been participants in this tightly woven learning community for two-thirds of our lives. So this is where we came from, and this is where we're going. Noah is committed to the University of Maryland to study physics. Anand John is attending MIT for Electrical Engineering and Computer Science. Thomas is attending the University of Delaware to study mechanical engineering. Arun is attending the University of Pittsburgh to study civil engineering. And I'm attending the Stevens Institute of Technology to study environmental engineering. So we would like to start by taking a trip to the John G. Leach School in the Colonial School District, which inspired us to change some lives. Let's take a look. This is Frank Hughes. Frank specializes in adaptive physical education, and he's constantly finding ways to engage his students through allowing them to play sports. Let's take a look at what Mei Ling is doing. Mei Ling is playing baseball. As you can see, she's reaching for an assistive button. Low-cost buttons like these can be as complicated as a puff and sip switch, or really as simple as connecting two pieces of aluminum foil. Her assistive button is connected to an interface box, which can also be connected to an appliance. The appliance that she is currently manipulating is a corded leaf blower. When she manipulates the leaf blower, it propels a baseball to simulate Mei Ling hitting a ball in the sport. It is also worth noting, it is also worth noting that there is a duplicate system, and quite a few of them around the room to boot, that provides the same function as Mei Ling's system and allows Mr. Hughes to include all his students in concurrent participation without having to take down setups like Mei Ling's right here.
So let's take a look at how this core device works here. It can plug into a wall, which is how it gets power from any ordinary outlet, and it has switches that allow the user to control the function and the duration that it's on for. There's also outlets which allow you to plug in any common household device and an aux jack which allows you to connect a button like the one Mei Ling was using, which, and these buttons are adapted for people with all levels of mobility. This is a great product. However, it costs three hundred dollars. Mr. Hughes's program is well-funded, so he's able to provide these for all the students in his classroom. But when they go home, it's a different story. This cost barrier makes it very difficult to do these same tasks they do in school when they're at home. Last academic year, we were inspired by the work of Mr. Hughes and other educators who pushed the limits of assistive technology to create affordable alternatives to this product. And we tested them in real-world environments.
But the problem that we failed to recognize at the time wasn't, it wasn't the high cost of multiple devices. Rather, it was the practicality of actually manufacturing our devices on such a large scale that it would actually meet the demand realistically. To illustrate this point further, let's do some quick back-of-the-napkin figures. So using, using the Brandywine School District as a guide, to meet the demands of every student with a disability within this school district, we would need to produce about a thousand units. Our designs from last year would have taken maybe a week to make one, to make one of these would have taken about a week. This year, this is our short, short-term goal. So the Brandywine School District makes up about one-fourteen of the population of all K-12 students in the state. So in order to meet the needs of every single student with a disability in the state, we would have had to make ten thousand units, which is our long-term goal. However, we're not limiting ourselves to just these two goals. When we were presenting our project at the University of Delaware last fall, we were able to meet a variety of new people. One of those people was Diane Massey, who is the Director of Outreach and Engagement at Kendall Corporation, which is a corporation that runs senior living facilities. She helped us realize that our project should have an impact well beyond what we originally thought. As she told us, we may age, and we all may age into some kind of disability. So products like ours are needed so that we can still maintain our healthy, active, and engaging lifestyles. With this in mind, we realized that our target population was the six-point-four percent of Delawareans, adults with independent living disabilities, which brings us to our stretch goal of three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand units.
So with this in mind, we had to go right back to the drawing board where we had to solve this issue of scale. So to begin with, we chose to change our design, so we only use very commonly-used electronics to further decrease the cost of our products. And we also designed a printed circuit board. So not only did this decrease the footprint of our product, it also increased its manufacturability. This is as we could now tap into the highly efficient world of PCB manufacturing. And so we could now create a high volumes of PCBs for a very low cost, like so. And, and with that in mind, we now needed to create a robust enclosure for our device, but we needed the material we used to be sustainable and plentiful. So for that, we turned to leftover PVC. So over seven billion pounds of PVC are discarded every year, and so by upcycling this waste, we're hoping to decrease its impact on the environment.
To help us achieve our goal of ten thousand units and eventually three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand units, we created a partnership with the SITE program, an established manufacturing program within our school district that helps eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-olds with student, with special needs gain skills and confidence. Our partnership with SITE will assist us with assembly, packaging, and distribution. Our A A C U is a seamless substitute for the interface box, so individuals in classrooms that already have one will not have to make any accommodations to replace it with our A A C U. Our transition to mass manufacturable products allows us to produce them with, for less than twenty dollars, a ninety-three percent reduction in the current market product. Secondly, our transition away from soldering, three-D printing, and coating allows an easier assembly. Thank you for letting us share our story and help kids like JoJo make more home runs.
Questions or comments from board?
I'll just comment and say that Shark Tank is one of my absolute favorite shows, and I think you guys would rock it if you were to appear on it.
Thank you.
Congratulations on a phenomenal product, and I look forward to seeing the results next week.
Thank you.
Fantastic presentation. Very poised, polished. You guys have it down pat. Fantastic work that you're doing, and touching on all the boxes, the cost, environmental, you know, helping, you know, in order to change the world, you gotta, you know, change your community. Bringing in the local resources and groups to help. Fantastic. Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
May, may I also just say, um, thank you so much to the board and, or to the school district administration. And not so long ago, um, these pathways were created. And I know that there was a lot that went into the planning of the pathways and to make sure that they were meaningful pathways for our students. And so, um, thank you to the district administration and to Michelle and to everybody else that's been involved to, um, see the vision of these pathways so that the students could have these opportunities. Because as you can clearly see, the development of the pathway led to them being able to use the building blocks to get to this point. So they probably wouldn't have been able to get to this point, obviously, without the three years of instruction, probably plus even a fourth year in Dr. Wagner's classroom and those aides.
Yeah, I just wanted to say excellent presentation. Um, thank you also just for acknowledging the history of what you've learned in the district, starting in kindergarten at Mount Pleasant, um, P S Dupont, and of course, um, at Brandywine High. Thank you so much for just representing both the district as well as really the state of Delaware. You guys have done such a, such a wonderful job, and I know that your families and your teachers and your friends are very proud. Uh, we certainly are very proud of you too. And of course, this doesn't happen without somebody like Dr. Wagner. And Dr. Wagner, you illustrate and you do what good teachers do. You teach, you set the standard, and then you get out of the way. So thank you so much. As evidence that you are letting them do the presentation. You're letting them take over. So thank you so much.
Mr. Scrum, if I could add, uh, earlier this evening, we had the opportunity to thank
thank retirees that have given a life of service, and during that event, I used the following quote from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "Somewhere along the way, we must learn that there is nothing greater than to do something for others." How that saying resonates with the mindset, the self-serving of others versus self mentality of these young men in this competition. We learned, somewhere along the way, we learned, the five of you have taught everyone in this audience a valuable lesson. Thank you for thinking of others and using your talents in the service of others.
Just want to say thank you again, Dr. Wagner, thank you again, team, good luck to all of you in Washington DC next week. We are rooting for you.
Good evening, Mr. Scrobott, President of our Board, Jason Heller, Vice President, all of our awesome board members, Superintendent Holer, and all of our guests remaining in the audience and online. It is my distinct privilege to celebrate one more group this evening, and they are a group of staff members in the Brandywine School District that just do outstanding things in a myriad of ways. I'm going to invite some principals up to share briefly some of the highlights of what they have done in their respective roles and contributions. I'd like to start with Mr. Matt Auerbach, Principal of Mount Pleasant Elementary School, and would you please help me also to welcome Suzanne Banker. She is the Elementary Teacher of the Year for Mount Pleasant Elementary School.
Well, let me first start off by saying Happy Teacher Appreciation Week to all of our phenomenal teachers in the Brandywine School District. Super, super excited to celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week at Mount Pleasant Elementary and I know throughout the district. Greetings, Board of Education, Superintendent Holer, parents, students, and other esteemed guests. My name is Matthew Auerbach, and I am the Principal of Mount Pleasant Elementary School. I have the honor tonight of publicly naming Mount Pleasant Elementary's 2023 recipients of our teaching award winners. First, Ms. Jessica Smith was the recipient of our Educator Support Professional Award. Jessica works in Mount Pleasant's Emotional Support Program, and she has done so for nearly five years. She works diligently, daily, to change the trajectory of the lives of the students she works with. Unfortunately, Jess could not be here tonight, but I wanted to at least recognize her for the hard work that she puts into her job each and every day. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next, we have Ms. Denise Buffen, who is the recipient of MPE's Behavioral Health Professional of the Year Award. Ms. Buffen is also unable to attend this evening's event, but again, I felt the need to let everybody know how impactful Nurse Buffen is. Simply put, she is our rock. She is the calm in the middle of the storm, and she keeps us all safe, us, meaning teachers too, not just the kids. We love you, Nurse Buffen, and happy birthday, and happy Nurses Appreciation Day too. Finally, we have the great honor, I have the great honor of introducing to you Mount Pleasant Elementary's Teacher of the Year, Ms. Suzie Banker. I've had the privilege of working with Ms. Banker for nearly 10 years now at Mount Pleasant Elementary, and I can honestly say that Ms. Banker is one of the hardest-working, most caring, humble, organized, and respected teachers that I've ever worked with. Ms. Banker left the profession of teaching many years ago after having her own children, but came back to fulfill her calling, and I'm so glad that she did. She is a mentor to novice teachers and a calm presence in our kindergarten wing, which can get a little rowdy at times. Excuse me. Her passion for doing what's best for kids is palpable. She passionately yet respectfully voices her concerns around children during PLCs and other professional meetings, and has been a major force in bringing back structured play for kindergarten students, which has now become a district-wide initiative. Mrs. Banker has filled the voids that were created by a few other iconic MPE teachers, and has taken on these additional tasks with great care and professionalism. One of my favorite people to talk to during kindergarten recess, to hear about what's cooking in the Banker household this weekend, I am so proud to introduce to you once again, Mount Pleasant Elementary's 2023 Teacher of the Year, Ms. Suzie Banker.
And next, I would like to invite to join me on the stage, Principal Heather Austin from our SITE program, and this evening, Ms. Austin is going to be celebrating Darlene Fruckman, their emotional support, I'm sorry, Educational Support Professional of the Year, and they are about to join us now, please congratulate them.
Good evening. Again, I'm Heather Austin, a proud principal of our SITE program here in the Brandywine School District. I wanted to take one minute, Hakima, I promised you, to introduce Darlene Fruckman, who is our Educator Support Personnel of the Year. She is one of our paraeducators at the SITE program. I'm honored to be given the opportunity to honor Ms. Darlene Fruckman as our SITE Support Professional of the Year. This recognition is not only a testament to her hard work and dedication, but also to the impact that she has had on the interns, faculty, and the community. Darlene is an exemplary role model and mentor who has gone above and beyond to ensure that interns are given the best experience possible. Not only has she dedicated countless hours to our SITE interns, she also serves as a certified RBT, which she took that initiative to become certified on her own, assistant softball coach at Mount Pleasant High School, our SITE Equity Champion, and also the coach of our Unified Basketball Team. We are incredibly fortunate to have such an amazing para in our program. Let us celebrate her accomplishments and recognize her for the impact she has had on our program. It is only with people like Darlene that we can make sure that our interns have access to the highest quality of education. Congratulations to Ms. Darlene, our Paraeducator of the Year.
And we have one additional presentation this evening, and that's from the Fourwood Elementary School, and I would like to invite Principal Diana Golden, and I believe I saw yes, Assistant Principal Angela Williams to join me on the stage. And they have two people that they are acknowledging this evening. The first is their Elementary Teacher of the Year, Ms. Jennifer, I may chop this up a little bit, I apologize, Mikewitz.
Good evening. I am proud to present Ford Elementary's Teacher of the Year and my mentor 18 years ago, Dr. Jennifer Mikewitz. Jen has served many positions in BSD over the past 23 years. She might have more certifications than I have fingers to count on, which shows Jen is the true image of a lifelong learner. Dr. Mikewitz is well-respected for her curricula knowledge, teaching instruction, and use of classroom management strategies. Jen is innovative, reflective, and task-oriented. She supports the growth of our school as first-grade team leader and lead of our equity team. Not only does she have high expectations for herself, but she holds high expectations for each student in her diverse classroom. She creates a positive, inclusive learning community where she supports and challenges each student every single day. As a first-grade teacher and one who teaches children to learn to read, Jen takes the success of each of her students personally. I'll never forget Jen's words. "My students will grow and achieve because of who they are and what they want to be matters most. I will not be the reason that one of them cannot read leaving first grade, which could impact their future to become a doctor, a teacher, or anything they dream to be." This statement exemplifies Jen's passion and dedication to see each of her students succeed. Forward is extremely thankful to have Dr. Jen Mikewitz as a teacher and a teacher leader who truly puts students' learning above all else. Jen, we thank you for your passion and dedication. I am pleased to honor Ms. Kenya Brown as Ford Elementary's Educator Support Professional of the Year. Ms. Brown deserves this recognition as she truly cares about Ford staff, students, and family. She has been a custodian in BSD for over 17 years, and almost nine of those have been at Forward. As a colleague shared, Kenya enhances the learning environment through her attention to detail, caring enough to do the small things well that may even be overlooked. Kenya does whatever needs to be done, as she treats our school as if it were her own home, and goes above and beyond without even being asked. Kenya is well-respected and valued by her colleagues. In addition to her responsibilities, Ms. Brown creates meaningful relationships with students and staff members. She greets everyone with a smile and warm welcome. Her relationships with staff and her knowledge of our students are a benefit to our Forward community. Kenya's infectious laugh can lift spirits and inspire smiles. We are so fortunate to have such a caring, dedicated colleague as Ms. Kenya Brown. She is an asset to our custodial team as well as our school staff. Kenya, you go above and beyond to ensure our building is a welcoming, clean, and safe environment for our students, staff, and families, and we thank you.
All right, that'll lead us into Superintendent's report. Mr. Holer.
Our last board meeting took place only a few weeks ago, but there's plenty of amazing student and staff accomplishments and information to share this evening. On April 24th, Secretary Holidick, Governor Carney, Senator Carper honored 92 of the state's most distinguished seniors at the annual Secretary of Education Scholars Dinner. The scholars were joined by their families and their principals. Secretary of Education scholars' selections are based on both academic record and community service. Congratulations to the winners from Brandywine High School. You saw both Aban John earlier and Jonathan P. Hey, I'm sorry, from Concord High School, Miles Bly and Mira Ratnagari, and from Mount Pleasant High School, Eleanor Frank and Zakaya Zara. Congratulations to these amazing students, and we wish each of you continued success next year in college. I know we just recognized our Samsung National Finalist Team, but I couldn't imagine giving my report without out again drawing attention to a top-10 finish in the nation in a very prestigious competition. Please know that regardless of outcomes in the finals, this team, you, you scored an impressive victory, not only for Brandywine High School and the Brandywine School District, but for all of Delaware with your ingenuity and creativity in the service of others. Again, congratulations. So, where does such a passion for design and engineering begin? Well, it begins with outstanding educators that seek opportunities to focus on STEM education, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics in the earliest years of education. Let me correct that, in honor of a late board member, Mr. Joe Brumskill. Mr. Brumskill was emphatic that STEM be replaced with STEAM, science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. BSD programming focuses on incorporating STEAM-related concepts and experimentation into cross-curricular content. The engagement and wonderment as seen in these photos are the foundational elements that lead to the accomplishments that we just celebrated with our Brandywine High School Samsung Solve for Tomorrow team. Speaking of the arts, we did it. The Brandywine School District has been honored with the Best Communities for Music Education Award for the fifth consecutive year. Thousands of schools and school districts go through the evaluation process each year in the hopes of being selected as Best Community for Music Education. Congratulations to our amazing vocal instrumental and string students and staff on this impressive achievement. A special shout-out to Dr. Dominic Pizzano, who oversees the arts for the district. And I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge our parents and the community for their continued support for the arts in the Brandywine School District. A quick fact from the recent Young Brandywine Artist exhibit at the Blue Ball Bar, over 2,500 in-person visitors toured the gallery of student artwork during the event. Who knows how many took advantage of the virtual gallery tour that was online? In addition, around the arts, Concord High School student Ozim Backham received gold nationally for his photograph and will be honored in New York City in June at Carnegie Hall. Tally Middle School art students will have their artwork in a special exhibit at the Biggs Museum of Art on Sunday, May 7th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Without question, the arts are alive and well in our schools. Award-winning programming is the Award-winning programming is the perfect segue into our next slide. A partnership between Delaware Technical Community College and several schools, including all three BSD high schools, was awarded the Delaware State Chamber of Commerce Superstars in Education Award. BSD students currently in the Patient Care Technician CTE pathway were recently filmed at Dell Tech in Wilmington for a video commemorating the award. The Superstars in Education ceremony, in which this award will be officially announced, is actually taking place at this very moment. We were able to get a copy of the video being shown at that event. Let's take a look.
Delaware Tech's a great fit for the patient care program for many reasons. First, a lot of cases, our students do want to go to college, so they come out of high school and want to go into our nursing program or one of our ally health programs. This gives them an opportunity to work in a field while they're earning their college degree.
During the pandemic, we were in crucial need of staffing. People were burned out, we were short-staffed. The students from this program stepped up. We were able to onboard several of them very quickly, get them on the floor, on the unit, trained and working. We were extremely moved by what the CNAs were able to do to alleviate the nurses and doctors from the daily duties that they weren't able to do.
I would say about halfway into the program, we kind of integrate the skills portion to where they go in the lab and they do a lot of hands-on. They do a lot with the mannequins, and then they also play the patient. And seeing them go from very timid and shy and afraid to just soaring is the best feeling in the world.
I think I'm a senior in high school, so I am getting a lot of skills and hands-on that I would not get just in my normal school, and it will provide me a very good background for my future in nursing.
These students coming up, they care, they really do, and they go above and beyond to help, and that's what we need. We need a lot more of that.
There is a very large need for CNAs at Christiana Care and in healthcare overall. We have probably about 100 openings at this time.
I think the patient care program's having a great impact on the local workforce. As students graduate, and our first cohort, we had statewide 45 students, well, we're over 140 students now. So just think sheer numbers, how many students are going into the workforce upon graduation, even if it's part-time, the impact that can have on long-term care facilities and the hospitals, settings up and down the state.
Speaking of superstars. Last meeting, we congratulated Mount Pleasant High School's JROTC Robotics Program for having two teams qualify for the VEX Robotics National Championships in Dallas, Texas. You heard earlier that the student cadets from both Mount Pleasant High's teams, Team 890G and 890K, made it all the way to the quarterfinals of the national competition. In addition to excelling in the actual competition, Team 8903K won the 2023 National Sportsmanship Championship Award at the national competitions. Congratulations to our cadets and to Colonel Montanez for their outstanding accomplishments. I would also like to take time to congratulate the BSD students that participate in the Brandywine Bots Robotics Program. Board member Jason Heller is one of the co-founders of the group that is primarily comprised of BSD students. This year, five Brandywine Bots teams and the two MPHS JROTC teams all qualified for the VEX Robotics World Championships. How amazing is that statistic? Only 5% of the VEX teams in the world ever make it to the world championship. This is the third time that the Brandywine Bots has had teams competing, and the second year for MPHS JROTC teams in the world championships. This year, all of the Delmarva Region teams competing at the Worlds came from the same unit, Brandywine. Congratulations to Brandywine Bots Middle School Team 9039J for receiving the sportsmanship for their division. No intro needed on this story. Let's just roll tape. The Help Me application can be downloaded in the App Store or in Google Play. Alternatively, individuals can connect at web.helpmeresources.com backslash login and search for the Brandywine School District. Those directions will be included in the board recap that gets mailed out to parents within the next week. If the spring harvest is a sign of what's to come, farmers and consumers around the tri-state area are in for a treat with this year's crops. Maple Lane Science students are reaping the bounties of the seeds planted months ago. Students study the termination cycle and put their learned knowledge about growing things into practice. Students in Mr. Glazier's 7th grade social studies classes at Springer Middle School is also proven to be quite proficient in growing things too. Stock, stock portfolios, and stock options. Once again, Springer students excelled in the University of Delaware Center for Economic Education and Entrepreneurial Stock Market Competition, an online simulation of the global capital markets that engages students in grades 4 to 12 in the world of economics, investing, and personal finance, and prepares them for financial independent futures. Springer had three teams placed in the state competition. Coming in fourth place was the team Peyton Connie, Mave Erickson, Elena Michael Witz, and Lauren Felton. Coming in second place was the team of Eftintay Ramsey and Mohamed Abbas. Coming in first place, out of a total of 133 teams, was the team of Kiara the Tsar Messenger, Abigail Umbrecht, and Alyssa Umbrecht. This team was able to outperform the S&amp;P 500 by 17.2%. This team will be recognized at the award ceremony at the University of Delaware. Congratulations to all the participants. And we'll end this evening's superintendent's report with our May sizzle video. Enjoy.
Good morning, Mount Pleasant Dragons. Mr. Hourback here with your morning announcements coming at you live.
Our adaptive playground ensures that kids with and without disabilities have access to play on playground equipment.
Or one super-strong one, right?
Yeah, so what can we say about his performance?
So maybe that'll do something on the way he speaks.
His dad was running.
So whether you're gonna take turns through paragraphs?
The engineering students have done an amazing job of visualizing how to make things that really help people with disabilities create art and express themselves.
It's easy to see why I'm proud to be BSD. That's my report for this evening. Thank you Superintendent Holor, any comments or questions from the board?
My only question is, how do we get invited to the Puppy Reading Seminar?
Like I say, even an old curmudgeon like me, that video touched on the old heartstrings. I know we covered a lot of time tonight on, you know, a lot of the recognition for students and teachers and events, and something about tonight just strikes different with me, and I sit here and all of us on the board, you know, care a lot about public education in the Brandywine School District, otherwise we wouldn't sit up here. But tonight, I'm really super proud to be a product of this district, to send my kids to this district, and like any organization, we're not without our faults or challenges, and I know that we're all continuing to strive to do better and be better, but just, I don't know how you can't look at the students that were recognized, their poise and the achievements and the things that they're accomplishing, and can't, you know, you've got to recognize the value of public education, specifically Brandywine School District, and I'm just super proud of this district and the people that run it and the teachers and the all levels that, you know, do our daily operations and, you know, make the wheels turn. So I just want to say thank you for everyone in this district that does what they do. Thank you to the students for their engagement and their thoughtfulness and their giving back to the community, and the parents and families and friends that support them. So, well done. And we do not have any public comment this evening. We'll take us into our board business and liaison reports, starting with Mr. Ackerman, DSBA Executive Board.
The Delaware School Board Association met last week. I did today email a copy of the minutes to all board members with a copy to the superintendent, so you have it. I think I'll let Ms. Gordon kind of cover what was one of the major topics, because it was a very, a very, well, it was happening right then, it was kind of a current event. But I will say that the executive, the officers of DSBA have all agreed to continue, so I'm going to continue in my role as president, and we expect our other officers are also committed to continue in their roles. We have one person who's facing an opponent in the election, but we feel confident that he'll win, and he does, and then we'll open up that slot again for nominations.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman, and congratulations. Ms. Gordon, DSBA Legislative Committee?
Yes. The DSBA Legislative Committee met April 26th. After I received minutes of the meeting from Dr. Marinucci, the report was sent to the members of the board and to Dr. Lawson. The Legislative Committee initially reviewed 12 house bills and had supportive positions of all the three of those. The bill that received strong opposition was the House Bill 96. This act reduces school board elections from 18-year-olds to 16-year-olds. All other public school elections, which includes referendums, the minimum voting age remains 18 years old. We did receive notice from Dr. Marinucci on April 29th that this House Bill was tabled by the committee and that a committee hearing would take place within 12 legislative days. There was also opposition to House Bills 3 and 127. Only three Senate bills were reviewed, only one was opposed, that was Senate Bill 61. Our next legislative meeting is scheduled for May 31st.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon.
And Dr. Marinucci did make an effort to contact board members throughout the state in regards to that voting age bill. And my comments back to the representative who opposed it, as well as the Education Committee, was it's not going to help us pass a referendum to lower the age of school board elections' voting eligibility to 16. In fact, it may, it may cause other citizens in our community to feel like their votes are being diluted, because certainly you have a captive audience in the school buildings, so could you keep the elections in the school buildings, or would you have to move them someplace else? There's just a whole plethora of issues that you open with that door. And the other thing is the idea that, you know, citizens might not be inclined to vote for referendums in that case. And I also expressed to the legislators that I wrote to that it really feels like the legislature does not appreciate school board service. It just comes off that way, you know, with the lowering of the terms, other things that have come along down the pike, mandating a curriculum, loss of local control. It just doesn't feel, I don't know how y'all feel, I've been up here for a long time, but it just doesn't feel like the legislature appreciates what we do and the time that we volunteer and the service that we provide. And I would just hope that they would, you know, kind of take a look at the people who are running, and it's been very consistent, even though the terms have changed to four years, it's still about the same number of people running for seats. It hasn't really changed the number of people running. It certainly hasn't enticed more people to run with a lower term. the number of people running. It certainly hasn't enticed more people to run with a with a lower term. So I would just, you know, like the state of a legislature, hey, have a little consideration for us and if you value our service a little more than you do.
Understood.
Can I, um, why do you, you said that it might discourage individuals from?
So we go through a lot of trouble to convince the public that they should vote for referendums. And I think that if the public felt that students were putting board members on the board, they would be less inclined to vote for a referendum. Plus, it's real simple. The age of majority is eighteen.
Except we now set the precedent with the Wilmington Learning Collaborative where we have at least one, we have three students who sit on the board, but there's one voting student. If it were up to us, we would have three voting students. And so if you watch any of our meetings, those students are absolutely engaged and surprisingly very impressive and aware of the content of what we discuss. And so I think having students at the table, especially who are making decisions about them, has proven to the WLC Board to be more fruitful and beneficial to us.
Reverend Perry, the the bill was tabled this week.
So I was questioning or asking, um, what's my call here? Dr. Ackerman?
Like you were.
To explain why a student presence would deter someone from voting in favor of the referendum, not necessarily.
Again, it's not, the idea is not to put students on boards. The idea is to let sixteen and seventeen-year-olds vote in school board elections. That's the proposal.
I understand that. And I just think that it's, the earlier we can engage any voter, the better. And of course, we want informed voters. But I think we wait too late to engage young people in the voting process, which is, which which plays out in not just school board elections, but elections as a whole at times. It's not too, not too sense.
Thank you, both of you. District Finance Committee met on May third, a little earlier in advance of this early meeting. Discuss the monthly financial report, financial position report and tax abatement request that Ms. Florrie will present later on. Our next meeting will also be early, June eighth, in order to meet the early June meeting. And I know we've got a couple more board liaison reports, but I know we have a last-minute public comment, which I'll allow after we finish our our board reports. Health and Wellness, Mr. Heller?
The Health and Wellness Leadership Team held a planning meeting on May fourth, and the full committee will meet on May eighteen.
Mainest Advisory Committee, Mr. Heller?
So the Mainest Advisory Committee met May second at site. The bulk of the meeting was discussing district capital needs as we begin determining what the fiscal side of a next referendum might look like. The majority of the capital needs that we discussed were around Mount Pleasant High School as well as Mount Pleasant Elementary School, which both have not seen renovations for quite a while. There's also a long discussion on how to accommodate, and we've talked about site several times tonight, how to accommodate the ever-growing needs of the site program and able to grow and move forward to give those students even better career opportunities to prepare them for their future.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Heller. Ms. Pigeon, parents, council, students with disabilities?
The last meeting was held on May fourth. That's the last meeting for this year. There were presentations from the Division of Vocational Rehab on transition and the University of Delaware Spectrum Scholars Program and the Classic Program at the University of Delaware. If anyone, I believe Dr. Warner sent out the presentations to all of the email addresses that she has for review for anyone that couldn't attend. If anyone is interested in serving on their school, as their school's representative for next year, they can reach out to the school principal for nominations that are going to start the beginning of next year. And there is not another meeting this year.
Thank you, Ms. Pigeon. Wilmington Learning Collaborative update, Reverend Perry?
The Wilmington Learning Collaborative met last Thursday, May the fourth. Our priorities continue to be creating communication networks and an infrastructure to ensure that we're able to disseminate information to our respective districts and constituencies. We are also in the process of securing CPA. We have received the first installment of funding to, um, to, um, to cover our initial expenses. We've also, um, are in the process of creating a mentoring framework for our student reps. We understand the importance of, again, engaging them, as I previously stated, but also ensuring that they are prepared for our meetings and they understand the concept, content and what is discussed. Christina School District is responsible for identifying a new student rep. As you all may or may not be aware, their student rep is our voting rep who is a senior and will be graduating. We received the first draft of our council bylaws from our council. The WLC Board did have an initial read on May fourth, and the committee will be entertaining the the adjustments to our council bylaws. Our main priority at this time has been hiring our executive director. As previously stated, we had more than a hundred candidates express interest in the position. Seventeen persons automatically progressed to the second phase of our hiring process, and another seventeen received additional screening. Of the thirty-four, eleven candidates were recommended to the WLC Board to move forward. Those eleven candidates received written exercise today, Monday, the May the eighth, and have until the end of business on Wednesday, May the tenth, to submit the exercise to our empowerment team, our project manager. The empowerment team would then screen the exercises and recommend those candidates who will move on to the face-to-face interview phase. We are currently discussing a recommended date to host the community forum to introduce the finalists to the community. Details and a mutually beneficial format for the forum are currently also being discussed. Details will be shared broadly once finalized. Since this last, since this board is met last, I've had several meetings with, I've had several meetings to include one with Secretary Hollidick regarding additional support, Governor Carney, and made one presentation to the Extended Learning Opportunities Subcommittee of the Department of Education. Our next meeting will be held next Thursday, May the eighteenth, at six PM at Delaware State University on November fourth. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Reverend Perry. Ninety-one seven, WNPH Advisor Committee does not, has not had a meeting, but I did just get an email a few days ago regarding some WNPH students. You had the DPA awards, I think were mentioned last month. We had three students won first place. That automatically enters them into the national competition. And that looks like that was Brendan Smith, Gemma Calabria and Verona Khan. So we should have the results in a week or two for the national competition, and hopefully we can bring them in in June for their recognition. No meeting set for the summer meeting at this point. Any additional board member reports?
Yes, Mr. Scrub, but I would like to just give a report on the District Committee for Educated Recruitment and Retention, if I may?
Please do.
Before I do that, I just want to say that Gemma actually interviewed me for the radio special where I shared six songs and then she shared six songs. And she certainly, I know that everyone does a great job over at the radio station. So congratulations to everybody. The District Educator Recruitment and Retention Meeting Committee met on April twenty-seventh. It was led by our HR Director, Delithia McIntyre. We began the meeting with a thought-provoking question as kind of a way to get to know each other. The question was, in what ways have you been supported this year? Which I thought was a really wonderful way to start off, really positively, and to think about ways that that our educators could continue to be supported. Then after giving a debrief, just to get some of our new members who are current twenty-twenty-three Building Teachers of the Year, and then we will invite future twenty-twenty-four Building Teachers of the Year to join us next year. So we really are excited about having representation from each of the buildings. In the future, Ms. McIntyre has encouraged the the teachers to bring other representatives with them to future meetings, just to really make sure that we're diversifying and and really being thorough and and seeking feedback. So at this past meeting, we got us everybody up to speed and then we did a little bit of some focused teacher feedback. And and we got some really interesting ideas and a lot of really great ideas. And we're still in the idea-seeking phase as we will continue meeting next year, I believe, monthly, yes, monthly. And I'm just saying, solution-focused, but yet still honoring concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Stock.
Can I, I have a question for Reverend Perry, if I may. I read, I think it was maybe Delaware Live today, I was reading an article about the WLC and the timeline. And just a question that came up from that article. In your opinion, I guess, do you think the size of the WLC Board is slowing down the progress? One of the concepts of the WLC that we talked about was kind of streamlining things and eliminating red tape. And the WLC Board has grown to be larger than any school board in the state. So I was wondering if you think that the number, the sheer number of people having an opinion is slowing down progress? And if you think that'll change drastically once there's an executive director?
I would say absolutely not. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that is taking place, and I can't imagine that falling on five or six people. And so the fact that we do have a relatively larger board absolutely works to our benefit. The board members meet, as a collective body, we meet twice a month, every other week. And then in between those meetings, we actually have several subcommittee meetings as well. So I can't imagine all of the work falling on a board this time. And do, your second question was, do I anticipate that? I actually think that we, considering the magnitude of the work that we've had to do, I think that we are making a lot of progress. And once we hire an executive director, we absolutely intend and expect to move a little quicker. But just the administrative task that we've had to to do and to, and then as we're working, dealing with the challenges that come up naturally and organically, I think the size of our board absolutely works to our benefit more than it does in our country.
I have to say, I hope you get the the support that is needed. I was surprised to read that the that the support from the state wasn't as much as needed. So hopefully you get that. Something is definitely warranted.
So those out of the meeting with Secretary Hollidick and Governor Carney, they absolutely, and I should have apologized to both of them. I should have reported as such. They absolutely did offer to lend additional support specifically from the Biden Institute. And so we are, that is not, I I also failed to mention that I had a family emergency last week, so I wasn't able to attend the last meeting. And so I wasn't able to share that broadly, but that is Dr. Hollidick specifically. In addition to Governor Carney offered additional support.
Fantastic. Thank you. So as I mentioned earlier, if it pleases the board, I'd like to reopen public comment. We have some speakers that would like to make comments. This is the time. We ask our speakers and audience members be courteous and respectful to each other. This is your time to be heard regarding topics related to the Brandywine School District. Since I don't have comment cards for you, if you could please make sure you fill one on the way out and just make sure you clearly introduce your name. Once you begin speaking, you'll have two minutes to speak.
Hi, I'm Joe Consiglio, Concord High School English teacher.
I'm Bailey Fields, and I'm a freshman at Concord.
Hi, I'm Elliot Roseau. I'm a junior at Concord, and we're here to represent Concord's Gay Street Alliance and are here to ask you to please stop the practice of segregating students by gender at graduation. Graduation gowns should be one color, and students should line up alphabetically. Currently, students are forced to either wear white or maroon gown at graduation. In effect, students are forced to publicly identify their gender. Johnston's website, which is the website that provides the gowns, lists the gowns that are white as female and the maroons as male. So what choice should those who are transgender or gender non-conforming, what gowns should they wear?
The conflict is real and the harms are real. Suppose a student is out to their parents but not to their grandparents. That student must choose a gown that will either conceal their gender identity or out them to grandma. Suppose a student chooses a color and their parents say no. Every year, students bear the conversation that they must have at home, and Concord staff end up in the middle of family fights. And when students are courageous enough to wear the color of their choosing and they receive full support from their parents, they are often bullied by their classmates. Last year at graduation, a Concord student needed an escort to his car. This is not a personal or school-level problem. This is a societal problem. The bullying and marginalizing of transgender people is a national shame, and it's not just a gay thing. It's a matter of public justice. Consider this. What if we segregated students not by gender but by height or eye color or race? Imagine if Johnston's asked you to identify your religion and then chose your graduation robe.
The solution is simple and obvious. One, order one colored gown and have students line up alphabetically for graduation. This costs nothing. This requires no sacrifice. It's so easy. Schools around the nation have already made the move without incident. We know you know this. We first approached you about it five years ago. We have co-respondered with each of you individually. We have met many of you personally about this. And yet, despite assurances that we have been heard, we have not been given an answer. It's as if you hope the problem will solve itself, or perhaps that these students, if ignored long enough, will just go away.
I'm afraid we're out of time. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for your comments. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to accept? I'm going to do item eight A and then item eight B. Motion to accept the monthly personnel report as discussed in executive session?
Summon.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to accept employee matter, the attendance recommendation for employee matter twenty-three dash one zero four as discussed in executive session?
So moved. Second.
I'll give it to Mr. Ackerman on the motion, Mr. Heller on the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Items nine, A, B and C. Do I have a motion to accept student matters, A, B and C, as discussed in executive session?
Summon.
Motion, Ms. Stock, second, Reverend Perry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carrying. Old business. We have a draft of board meeting dates and times for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. Mr. Heller?
Just very quick, only two changes to that document that was presented last meeting. I think it was Ms. Pigeon who asked that we go back and look, make sure we weren't having a board meeting following an extended week off for students. We did find that to be the case in November, corrected that date. And then we also have corrected the date of the July meeting. Last time it was listed as July tenth. This time it listed as July seventeenth. That is more aligned with our current scheduling of board meetings. We will need to call a special meeting where we'll ask our CFO, Ms. Flores, to share the preliminary budget for the school year next year as well. as well as her recommendation or recommendations to the board for tax warrant. And that'll need to be done prior to the thirteenth of June, on which it's due to the county.
Do I have a motion to accept the board meeting dates and times as presented?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Heller on the motion, Ms. Stock on the second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Leads us on to new business, Ms. McIntyre? Yeah, contract extension, Brandywine School District Board of Education and the Brandywine School District Nutrition Association, DSEA slash NEA.
This evening, we are before you regarding the approval of a contract extension. The contract extension is between the Brandywine School District Board of Education and the Brandywine School Nutrition Association. The current contract will expire on June thirtieth of this year, two thousand and twenty-three. I would like to give special thanks to the Brandywine School District Nutrition Representatives, Lilian Poole, Lead General Worker, and Loretta Truono, General Worker along with Mr. David Davis, DSEA Rep and Rep for the Union, along with the Brandywine School District School Nutrition Department Supervisor Colleen Carter, Sheila Quickle, the Senior Operations Specialist, Corey Knoff, Acting Associate Operations Specialist, Kelly Marvane, Field Manager, CFO Jill Floray, and myself participated in these dialogues. The parties came to a tentative agreement on the one-year extension to the current contract with agreed-upon language and salary provisions on May the second of two thousand and twenty-three. The current contract ends on June thirtieth of this year, and the language and salary items that are part of the negotiated agreement with the revisions are the basis for this one-year contract extension from July the first, two thousand and twenty-three, through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. The tentative agreements, if approved, will affect the working conditions and local salary provisions of the extended contract agreement between the parties for the next year. It is the superintendent's recommendation that the board approve the one-year extension of the contract with the new provisions of the agreement between the Brandywine School District Board of Education and the Brandywine Nutrition Association.
Do I have a motion to accept contract extension as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, Mr. Ackerman, second, Ms. Gordon, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. Next up, Ms. Floray with the monthly financial report, position report, and tax abatement requests.
Good evening, members of the board, superintendent, those in person and online. I'm starting to embrace being the last presenter every month. And, and I, I'm thinking of that little puppy that's just crawling in the bed after just a long day, ready to snooze with one last story. But it's a good story, and, because oftentimes finances put people to sleep, I know. But these are good. On the revenue side, we're ninety-nine point three percent of local revenues received. We're inching our way to the June thirtieth balance, or I'm sorry, the June thirtieth fiscal closing. And so ninety-nine point three, we just are expecting the last taxes as well as the, the state senior property tax rebate. On the state side, state discretionary, we're ninety-eight point eight percent received. And for categorical state, eighty-four point seven, with the largest being state Division One salaries that they will fund fully by June thirtieth. On the expense side, you'd expect to be at this point of the year at eighty-three point three percent. That's just ten of twelve months, and we're below that at seventy-eight point seven one. There's one area of the budget, I spoke to this last month, that is over budget, and that is energy. There's nothing that will change that going into June, that's an encumbrance. And so I don't anticipate that that number's going to grow significantly. And the finance committee is going to look that, look at that in detail in the next month. But it is based on our expenses in both gas and electric. The other item in yellow on the report is the, that is showing over budget. This one, there is a reflection of, of revenues that's not in there as well. And so nutrition is showing is over budget, but there are also additional revenues, both from the Titan portal as well as the federal reimbursement. So where you would see a budget negative look concerning, obviously, when you don't have the additional revenue to account for it, it would be, but on the nutrition one, we will, we're working on that to kind of present a more realistic revenue and expense picture for preparing the next year's budget. The, the report includes where we are on SER expenditures, obviously winding down SER two and moving into SER three. And the last part of the report, it almost mirrors exactly what we do on the financial position report. And that is, what is our projected ending balance for June thirtieth? And this is where the puppy is starting to close its eyes, because exactly where we said it was going to be as we get closer and closer to June thirtieth. Eight point five eight is what the cash flow said, and that was an April thirtieth projection, whereas the financial position report, virtually the same thing. It's projecting what our cash position will be coming into June thirtieth. But that one was done as of March thirty-first. So they're not identical, slightly different only because of the, when the projection was done. But still, eight point five eight eight million, which is sufficient to start the next year. And then, as we said, part of those conversations that we'll have in July are, what is the next, next month's finance committee will go over the, the three-year forecast, and then what are the projections for the next year? So I did kind of, I know it's two separate votes, but I did kind of roll the two in together because they were the same presentation or the same information.
So a quick question on the financial position report. In the past, it's only been a one-pager, it appears to have grown to a two-pager. Has the state changed the formatting, or have you just enhanced it?
I did not, the, the, it's a spreadsheet, and the one page is a summary, and the other page is the detail that feeds the summary. So it, it kind of breaks down all the lines that go into that one-page summary.
Yeah, I think in the past, all we've seen is the summary page.
Okay.
I mean, it's what I'm happy to see, the detail.
Yeah, it's really, it's how, how it feeds that, but it's all in, it's data that's entered in Excel.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to accept the financial report for April thirtieth, subject audit?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Pigeon, Ms. Stock. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Financial position report? Oh, I'm sorry. I guess since I called the other one. Do I have a motion for the financial position report as a subject audit?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ackerman, Ms. Stock, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And tax abatement request.
We have another tax abatement request this month, this one is from Red Clay. It's for the Hocas and Historical Society. They acquired part of ownership of property that was transferred. In the process of transferring it, the tax-exempt status was dropped. And so the county passed a resolution to correct that. Red Clay's board has voted to abate those taxes, which they weren't paid, so it's not a refund. It's just, it will never be collected, and our part of the tax pool would be eleven hundred ninety dollars and seventy-four cents. But it is tax-exempt property and shouldn't have been charged.
Move to accept the tax abatement request? Second.
A motion, Mr. Ackerman, second, Mr. Heller. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. General information and meeting dates. Next, we have a board workshop scheduled for May twenty-second, Mount Pleasant Elementary, multipurpose room, followed by our regular board meetings on June twelfth and July seventeenth. Any last comments or questions from the board?
I know, I know Mr. Scarborough doesn't want to hear this from me, but I do want to make a comment regarding our public comment. And I would just like to ask, because this has been an issue for many years, as Mr. Consiglio had stated, he also had emailed us as a board back in January. So I'd like to ask that we could either add this topic of graduation colors to a board agenda, a board workshop. I, I don't want us to have a discussion necessarily tonight due to the hour, and, but I do think it's worthy of a board discussion, because I think we all have different opinions about, about this issue, and I think it's something that we should have a discussion about.
Is this not a school issue? I mean, why is the board getting involved with this? Shouldn't Concord decide what Concord wants to do?
So I completely agree with you, Mr. Ackerman, but I think that that's why we should have the discussion.
So are we, are we looking to pressure Concord into making some kind of a decision or a move? I mean, I haven't heard anything from Brandywine or Mount. Not as, I mean, you know, my own daughter is gender non-conforming, she wore the white gown, she didn't have any problem with that, you know? I, I get the concern, it just seems like something that should be handled at the school level, not the board level. I don't want to be telling the schools how to pick the colors for their graduation. It just, it just doesn't feel right, it should come from the school.
Well, I know each, each high school has had some creative liberty in the past in how they designed their ceremony. This year, what I'm hearing is that we, you know, we'll see some more consistency between the three high schools with alphabetical lineups. So hopefully that will, you know, alleviate some of the concerns of the students presented here tonight. But if Ms. Pigeon wants to, you know, put this on a board or workshop agenda in the future, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I would definitely second that, what, what Ms. Pigeon is requesting. In last, I think it was last spring, Mr. Scarborough, Reverend Perry, and myself, we did meet with Mr. Consiglio and a couple of the students, this was post-graduation, so I think it was actually early summer. And I think that I, I just continue to go back to, and I, I would like some time to seek what, what are best practices in this, in this area. And I think that we do need to spend some time, because it has been an issue for five years. And I would definitely like to give it the attention it deserves, that the students deserve.
Okay, we'll put it on a future agenda. Any last minute, anything else, anyone? With that, thank everyone for their time and attention and participation this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, this concludes our May meeting.